It's seven o'clock, I'd like to call the meeting to order, invite everyone please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kelly, would you call the roll, please?
In contact.
Here.
Steve Nelson.
Here.
Dame Sharla.
Here.
Dwayne Davy.
Here.
Michael DeVito.
Here.
Eric Jones.
Kristin Wren.
Here.
A form is present.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda as proposed? Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as proposed?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call.
Wren?
Yes.
Sharla?
Yes.
Davy?
Yes.
DeVito?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Dombeck?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Audience to visitors, is there anyone in the audience this evening who wishes to address the board on any particular topic? We'll move on then to communications, correspondence, informational items. Letters and newsletters. Boya requests. There were two, both of them have been responded to. Committee reports.
I've got some stuff there. You guys want to be here a long time, right? We were just talking about it a little bit before the meeting.
That's why we get paid the big bucks for it.
That's right. We were talking about it a little bit before the meeting, it was planning and zoning meeting last night. One action item, two workshop items. The action item was just a zoning change for what used to be the Midwest Museum Building, downtown, former community center. Had nothing to do with what their development plans are, but just a change of zoning from institutional to commercial, which makes sense because as institutional, there's really nothing you can do with it because we don't need a library, we don't need a school or a park building. So making it a C zoning makes sense, but they'll come back again when they have a development plan as to what it might be. There was rumor of a banquet hall or a restaurant or something, but that also didn't lead on as to whether the building's going to stay or they're going to raise it and just build fresh. They didn't say one way or the other. The workshop items were, one was development of the large acreage empty lot that's next to Menards that they own on Peace and whatever that crossword is.
Work and To.
Yep. And they have not subdivided in the past, they've been kind of doing that across the country on a lot of their lots where they have excess acreage. They're either developing some stuff for themselves and/or putting out outlots, their intent is to have, I believe it's five outlots out there, a couple three acres apiece for a restaurant or a single stand Starbucks or whatever it might be, something like that. But that leaves about five or six acres kind of in the back corner by their yard area and the residential border to the north that is really not usable commercially, no one would want that space, you're too far removed. So they were, they're proposing to put a storage outdoor, well enclosed, outdoor storage area, which they do as a business, as part of Menards and a number of places. It's different than the ones you see where it's chain link fence and all the storage doors and rows and rows of garage doors. Theirs is much like their yard, they face everything to the inside, have an access point, you drive into the yard and then you get access to your spaces on the outside, you would just see the outside of the building, no doors, no chain link fence. Really nothing wrong with the development plan, we're happy to subdivide that so they can, you know, we can have some economic growth, tax dollar revenue generated on that property. The real change, the real problem is the change in the use, the planned land use. So right now, storage facilities can only be approved on manufacturing zoned property, that's commercially zoned property. And to change one section of a subdivided lot to manufacturing would be spot zoning and not really fair, not appropriate planning if you go by the guidelines of land planning and urban planning. And to change it would open the door for a lot of other places to consider doing the same thing, which would hurt, harm people that already have used storage businesses, even though there's apparently quite a demand. And it would open the door for some of that other development. One of the things they proposed was maybe a PUD, which is typically used for unique, you know, a unique type of facility that's going to go in that doesn't really fit into a given area. It's often used in more residential type projects, not so much in commercially used projects. So it's unlikely that that's going to, it's going to be an uphill battle for that to happen. They'll probably still subdivide those other lots, but I don't think that storage thing is probably going to fly from a standpoint of the land use, doesn't make sense, it kind of goes against the unified development ordinance and things, what the intent was when we took storage units out of C zoning and put it in M zoning. And then the last one was the development of the property right behind Farm and Fleet, kind of near the Country Inn Suites there, that's been empty for 20 years at least. There's been a number of proposals over the years, at least three or four that I can think of in my time on the zoning board. And most of them had pretty high density, or they were a combination of commercial and like apartments over the top. None of them ever really flew either financially or density wise. This actually has 40 units, so, but there's separate groups of buildings, so 10 four-unit buildings that are spread across the site, it has three access points, one off of the drive into, you know, Farm and Fleet, and two coming off of the other Hathaway, the main road there. Has some additional parking on site, they're all single stories, lab on grade, one and a half car garages with another vehicle spot in the driveway. Nice looking front, need a little work on the back, but it's Weaver and Kozlowski are looking to develop that, it's probably the best plan we've seen, so it had favorable comments, and it was just a workshop item, but it had favorable comments during the meeting, so they have a couple minor things to maybe look at, and then they'll bring it back in a formal setting and go through the normal process. So I think it actually probably has a good shot of getting through because its density was down, they're at about 8.6 units per acre, so they qualify in the range of high density, but they're in the middle of that. The last proposals that have been there have been 9.7 to 11.6 units per acre, so we're on the lower side, which is more palatable. Only a couple people were there to express any concerns and they, they weren't against the development, they were actually, both said they were very happy that they're townhomes and that they'd be owned, not rented. But they, you know, what's the traffic impact and is there enough parking, that kind of stuff, so normal concerns, but I think those will all be answered, has probably a very good shot of getting through, so. That was planning and zoning, unless anybody has any questions. Then I'll go on to IASB. So this is the time of year where we have evaluated all the resolutions that were presented, so those were due in mid-June, and then we met as a committee last Friday. Fortunately, this year, they rotate the locations, it was in Naperville this year, so I did get the drive, three hours to get there. It was in Springfield last year, and it went till 1:00 in the morning last year, we were done by 11:15 this year. Yeah, so we changed the rules as part of the process, and coming out of last year, there were a number of things, there were a lot of, or certain districts that continued to put in what they called reaffirmations, so we already have a policy or a belief statement or a policy statement, and they just reaffirm it each year, and that takes time, and we're like, why do we need to do that? It's already in there, we're already advocating for it. We had one district that submitted 11 proposals last year, so we put a limit on the number of a district can put in at three, just because, you know, that's, it's not fair to everybody else. And then if a proposal has come before the committee, I believe it's, I believe it's only once, and it did not get through, it was not adopted, or was not presented, when they bring it back, because there were some that have come back three and four and five times, that it requires a two-thirds vote of the committee to even be heard. And then, you know, if people think it's worth hearing again, then we'll hear it and go through it again, but if it's been denied or do not adopt in the past, you have to get that. And we did have one that came through for that and it did not get heard. So just a really quick recap, there were 16 of them this year, I think there were 22 last year or 23. Real quickly, there were two that had to do with, let me get to the right side of the screen, they had to do with reinstating capital grant funding for school buildings to help with infrastructure. They were both very similar, they both were there and presented, they both agreed to combine their proposals into one amendment to two different statements that we already have, 2.27 and 2.18, and we added in and adjusted language in both of those, those both unanimously passed. Well, I should say, we voted on one unanimously passed it, we voted not to present the other one because we had combined them. Then we had child safe gun storage, which came up last year, and not that anybody is against safe gun storage, they just felt it's not the purview of the school board association to advocate for people's private gun storage. So that came up and it did not get a two-thirds vote, so it was not heard. We had a couple more school safety ones and funding for school security. These were not what Mercer County had put forth the last three or four years about being able to allow district armed teachers, that did not come back up, did not, was not revisited. But it, they talked about identifying school safety funding specifically, those two were both combined and amended and voted on, so one was approved, do adopt, and one was not heard because we combined them. One was taking fund balances to meet with the Miller Ratio Adjustment, which goes back to when we see people trying to go after, asking us for abatements in our fund balances because there's a certain percentage over. There's a number of other districts that have been encountering that for the first time where we've started to see it several years now, so they want to have a guideline as to what, there is nothing that says what that guideline is, so they wanted to set a ratio of when, when could someone be over budgeting or oversaving. And that did pass as an adopt. One for putting in a review committee for mandates, you get the state to put in a review committee that reviews mandates. I don't know if the legislature will ever listen to that, but it did pass, an amended version did pass to have asked the legislation to have a mandates review committee. One of the, one of the big questions there was, they wanted to have a mandatory sunset on all mandates, and then they would have to be renewed. And, you know, our head of our legal department, Shelley Bateman, said, you can put that in there, but I can tell you that's a nonstarter. So let's look at, you know, should be, using a language that should have a sunset or could have a sunset to make it more palatable. Request for special education funding and a task force that did not get approved, or actually was, actually voted on not to be heard, so they can amend that going into next year, they needed to clarify the task force part and who would serve on that, who was in charge of it, who selects that, that was not clear, so we said, we're not going to, we're not going to bring that forward, you need to polish that up and then bring it back next year. Firearms dealer location, that really came down to them not wanting to see a firearm, so right now it says you can't be within 500 feet of a school. They wanted to up it to 1,500 feet, and they said, it did not, did not pass, it was a do not adopt, primarily because they said, well, we just don't want the mental anguish of a student coming out of the building and seeing a gun store. And some of the rural districts said, you know, the length of my town is not 1,500 feet, so how can I, how can I do that? And the other question was, well, what if a gun store's been there for 20 years and a daycare, which qualifies under, you know, an early childhood center, comes in and moves in, are you forcing the gun dealer to move? That would not be fair. So there was a lot of issues there, so that, that did not pass. We told them if you would like to come back and ask to ban signage related to purchase of guns, that would make more sense to us, because, you know, Walmart sells guns, and you don't see signs on Walmart that say, hey, buy your guns here, you know. So that was something that we made a suggestion. There was one for alternative electric buses and/or low emissions buses, it also did not, did not pass because they said, you know, until, we have bigger fish to fry, until we have infrastructure to support that, until the buses don't cost $200,000 more than the regular bus, why would we, why would we ask for that? Let's not waste our resources on that, that can come down the road. Then there were the three from, from the charter school that asked for the reaffirmations, all of those were do not present, and we said, you already have the policy here, we're not going to, this is like a backdoor way to try and get the reaffirmation, so we did not do that. And there was a style guide for gender neutral language, which also was not heard because they did not have some of the things worked out, they said you need to refine it and bring it back. So finished at 11:15, all good, it was a great experience. I enjoy doing it, feel like you're contributing to something that's worthwhile at that point, so. All in all, there will only be, the format was changed, so instead of presumed, discussed, vote on each proposal as we go, so some people are there until 1:00 in the morning to present, we presented all of them upfront, had them stick around if there was a combined one, work together on that, and then we discussed and voted afterwards. And then there were a number of other things which actually have been long overdue, which were amendments and deletions of current position statements. There are a lot of them that have been there a very long time and are obsolete, and as we all know, school districts, school groups tend to not get rid of the stuff that they don't use or to work with anymore, so there were a number of things that were just striking out sections or entire position statements that just don't apply anymore because funding models have changed or things have changed dramatically. So cleaning all that up, and actually, one of the policy changes we made internally was that it'll be done on an annual basis, every year, they may bring stuff forward that is just obsolete or no longer needed. So we can focus on what really is needed from a policy, position statement and belief statement side, so there you go.
Well, thanks for your service, Steve, I know that takes a lot of your time and a lot of effort, and I know you really have devoted yourself to this and that you've served with distinction, and that brings distinction and honor back to our district, so.
Thank you.
I really appreciate that, so on behalf of the board, let me thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Other committee reports? Anybody want to top that?
No topping.
No topping?
All received.
Next item then is Assistant Superintendent for HR.
Thanks, Jim. I saw a few new faces in the crowd, so I just thought before I jumped in, I'd introduce the board to a couple of our new administrators for this year, so Jake Hunterman is going to be principal at North Grove, and then Brian Swanson is going to be an assistant principal at the high school. Well, a couple new faces for you.
Thanks for having us.
Okay. This thing's not working. Should have topped it, I thought.
Hate standing up here just manning. I get the faces. So we brought the Ag Department here today, you guys know Kara Pointer, Christian Thierwanger, Brooke Heinsohn couldn't make it tonight, but Kara and Christian are really good about talking about their students and their student accomplishments, they don't necessarily talk about themselves that much or the great work they've done, so I'm going to do that for them and probably make them feel a little uncomfortable. But they just caught word, I think last week, of a national award that they received. So they received, the National Association of Agriculture Educators, or NAAE, recognizes most outstanding programs, and our program was named most outstanding middle school, high school program for region four, there's six regions overall, so this is, they don't take those six and then identify one of them, so this is as high of a recognition or award that they could receive. That picture there is them receiving the state level, and then they had to meet certain criteria to potentially win this award. So these are the different areas that the NAAE looks at, and there's six states within our region, but they look at, just, they ask for an overview of the program, what's it look like, what's your mission, what are you trying to accomplish? They ask about the courses offered, they look for inclusivity and kind of how that's grown over time, what methods do you use in your instruction, experiential learning, so work-based learning program opportunities, and I know they've talked to the board about this during the high school presentation, leadership development of students, partnerships, so school, community, people in the industry, what that looks like, and then marketing and professional growth, so what are they doing to better themselves throughout the year? So I wanted to kind of revisit, this is where I'm going to brag on them a little bit, but revisit the growth of this program over time. And I see Mark Exstrom's also in the crowd, so I think, you know, years ago, Mark got this going as well, and then Kara kind of took what was in place and continued to grow it. So I didn't want to go too far back, but kind of wanted to go back to just before I got here, into my high school role, and then I got to see some of that grow while I was here, but if you go back to FY11, the program was at .6 FTE, so Kara had also taken on the job program, but it wasn't part of the Ag Department at that time. By FY13, had grown that to 1.0, by FY16 to 1.5, FY17 2.2, and then FY20 3.0. That is all based on them thinking outside the box, thinking of things that they could offer that students might be interested, but not knowing if they will, and then students kept coming back and signing up for that. So student interest is what drove that FTE, it didn't go the other way around, so they had to show that students wanted to take these courses, that they could sustain those, and students just keep coming back. And it's not your, only your traditional Ag or FFA student that maybe sometimes we think of, and that's what went into this award, I think, and them being recognized to students across the board. When you look at program curriculum, they've gone down to the eighth grade now, and I think that's probably helped them a lot, they've offered dual credit opportunities, they're looking at how that can change, Kara will talk a little bit about future opportunities. Some things that have happened just since I got here, the wood shop, that came back to life, the metal shop wasn't used at first, it's used every single period of the day now. So here is a picture of John Limbaris, he, I think, has been in front of the board to present it, but he was one of the first students that really brought that place back to life. And then a couple of the, the two bottom, hands-on leadership and culinary leadership, those are inclusive opportunities, so hands-on is a course we offer, the hands-on leadership and then culinary being a new class, but the leadership, they're partnering with our ABLE students and the leaders within their program are side by side with them. So those are two newer opportunities, they're looking how to expand that too, so more opportunities for students with disabilities that they can use their hands more and do things, so awesome opportunities there. I'm not going to hit on the experiential learning because they do that for you when they present in front of you, but then leadership development, so just looking back at some of the things that have happened since Kara stepped in and since Christian has joined, but there's been 44 state proficiency winners, there's been one state officer, five total in the history of the program, but one since Kara's been here, five section presidents, four national finalists, there's some new information on that, there's three new ones that you guys don't know about yet, so Kara's going to talk about that, and so if you remember, Max Griffey was in front of the board, he was the first one, and now we have three that are coming through this cycle. And then they continue to be a gold ranking national chapter, again, a credit to the things they have brought and done. Partnerships, I'm not going to hit on that too much because that's another thing they talk to you guys about when they present. So some future focus items, I'm going to ask Kara to come up and speak, or you can sit, whatever, but speak to these a little bit, so just to give you an idea, they had to talk about this as well, kind of where do they see this going, where do they see the program growing? So go ahead and fill that in.
So I did come in '07, Mark was here from '99 to '07, he had a good program, with every year, I feel like that was having flow, and he had a really good group of kids that loved him, that it took me a while to get them to like me, so that's where the numbers kind of have a float a little bit. They visited him every day in his office at Southeast. But I was thankful that he was here because that first couple years, he really, I tried to get his vision and continue that vision, because where I came from in Harvard, they weren't into SAEs, and, you know, there I was the first teacher who stayed longer than a year. So there I was just rebuilding, so coming here, it was already built, I had a sustain, so I like jumped right in and it was, I was thankful for Mark, so he was a big part of getting that in, but when Mark was here, Mike Fleetwood was still here, and was Dwayne Atkins still here?
Two.
Two, yeah, so that's who was utilizing those shops at the time, so then when that kind of all went, they were a storage facility for a while, and that's what I think was talking about, we kind of took those over when we did that. So the dual credit opportunity, well, first of all, I'll go back, Tim, as you guys know, is super future focused, he's always like, how can I help, what can we do to better kids? And he's always said, I kind of want like a little program within a program. And he's always said that about our department, because we get a special group of kids that sometimes don't fit in anywhere else in the school. And so he's always like, the more opportunities we can get them within your department, the better we are having them be successful in the school. And so he was future focused, and then Kathy's the one that brought on the eighth grade thing, and that's when we got the 1.5. So from there, it's kind of just grown, because we now have three freshman level classes. When we first started, when Anna was here, I think we had two. So, you know, or that was the start of two, because I was down at the eighth grade level. Then Nick came in and he's like, yep, let's jump on board, Mike came in, he's like, yep, let's keep going. So we have new IDEAs that go through, so the dual credit opportunities, Ag Academy, Brooke is coming over, she's in year six of teaching, she has a landscape design background, and she is also a science teacher, so she actually has dual credit with Kisho ready for horticulture. So that's something, she has three different classes that she offers that she did at Caenland, so that's something that she can bring over and do right away, and then we're going to work on getting the NCAA accreditation also for horticulture, so we can get that to count as a science for those kids, so we can get two of those out of our department. Since she has that science curriculum, it should be pretty easy for her to have that because they look at that certification a little bit more. I will say that the culinary leadership and hands-on leadership is something Christian taught at Caenland and brought here, so that was an idea, he went away for a year because they didn't have the opening yet, but he brought some good stuff then in from Caenland, and Mike was there, we were there when they started that, those classes, so that was kind of fun that all these people are bringing this stuff back to us. So the cross-curricular ideas and some of that stuff, he wants to introduce, and I also kind of want to bring in some more, like what do we do after BSAA with the animal kids? So we want to maybe do like a companion animal, or, you know, like a true vet science type class maybe after, he wants to maybe bring in like a meat science, food science type, you know, like a semester classes, because I seem to think that we see these kids that have these semesters after they take like world history and stuff like that, so if we can maybe offer more semesters and get some more kids in that way. I mean, the inclusive opportunities, you talked a little bit about that, with trying to get, they just had PE leadership, you know, for those kids that have peer leaders, but I've said it on the NHS committee, you know, when they review that, and a lot of kids don't have the leadership that they need, and we didn't feel like there was enough opportunities, so now, how many leaders did you have last year?
I think we had 16.
Yeah, so 16 more opportunities for kids to work with those type of students, learn that environment. So they kind of went back and forth, second semester was more the culinary, they cooked every week, they like did a different, they picked like a different, like Italian was one week, or breakfast, or they did different things, and then they had to plan it, and then the leaders were there to mentor them, and it was stuff that they could do on their own. And then the hands-on stuff, I think about when I went to the Opportunity House, you know, they're sitting there doing stuff with their hands, you know, sorting, organizing, so that's the kind of stuff that they're trying to teach here before they go out. So we just got wind on Friday, right, Thursday? So Drake Slutz was our middle school star farmer, discarded star farmer, the first that came over here, well, he also is a middle school finalist, top 10 in the nation with his Ag Science project on artificial insemination. And I'll give Courtney Weidemann credit, she's not here, but she did a lot with that, because she did that when she student taught, so that's like a 32-page application with his science for data that he collected, and so now he'll go and he'll interview September 9th. And then he'll be on stage at convention, and we'll find out if he wins or if he's top four or whatever, like we do with Max. And then Ellie Yokum and Lorelei Darlek did social systems, and they did theirs on, there was a big issue with Fair Oaks Farm a couple years ago, and the social media portrayed them a different way, so they did, they got like 160 results on their survey, and they formulated all that data and they put that into a research paper, and they made it to nationals in their area as well. So we'll be at national convention, then we were two-star gold ranking again, so that Thursday of convention will be on, potentially be on stage three times with our students, so that's really exciting. I think up and coming, we're just, and I think Brooke has some ideas that she wants to bring, I think, Mark, we got air conditioning. We got a new shelter at Green House recently, and they're looking to put on like a little headhouse storage place out to the side, so, you know, with Mark coming back in this role, he's still here to support us as well, and I think that's important because a lot of people don't understand the program unless maybe you've been in it, and so I think that that credits us. Between Christian and I and Brooke at Old School and Courtney here, we worked over 1,200 hours last year extra with our grant that we're provided for the Three Circles Grant, so we each had to do above like 400 hours, we were beyond 400 hours, but all the time that you But all the time that you see us doing stuff, we just keep track of all that. And I think it's, it's easier for us to be an outstanding chapter, because there's more than one person. You know, I can't do everything as much as I want to, I can't. So it's nice to have other people to lean on and to bring in those ideas, because I've been here since two thousand and seven. And so I haven't seen, so now Brooke coming in will bring even new ideas coming again from Canland. And I think that's just so exciting, and I thank the board for the opportunities and for not saying no when we ask you for things. Because I know that sometimes we always ask for new classes, we want to do new things, and you guys have been supportive of that. But we really do it with kids in mind, we want to be there and try to find a place for every kid to fit into our program. And I think that we've, I think we've been successful with that, as you've seen, and I hope to continue to do that moving forward. So we will go to, NDL convention is in Las Vegas, end of November, beginning of December. John Veer sponsors a big lunch, and they sponsor our award, and so they'll pay for us to go. We're still waiting to hear the logistics of that, but they'll put us in the hotel, pay our registration, our conference fee, all that kind of stuff. Airfare too, I think.
You think so?
But anyways, so John Veer sponsors it, so when we go to the lunch, they're, they're the ones that are there to present the award on behalf of NDL. So it's exciting, this year there was only, there was one winner, Kendra Callahan from Western Illinois. She won a teacher turn the key, and then there was a community supporter that won two, I think, so there was three from Oregon. So it's a pretty cool opportunity, and we love, we went last year to New Orleans, and it's really a really good conference. We took a lot of, we tried to, we put in to present PD, but they didn't pick us this year, because they had so many applicants. But we wanted to present PD too, on teaching in a multi-teacher program, but they didn't take it this year, so maybe another year. So am I missing anything?
I don't think so.
Am I missing anything that we talked about?
Well, probably, but I think you got good enough, so.
Mike and Nick wrote a really good letter, I thanked them at the last minute, they were in the office, calling me, asking me all these questions. And so they wrote us like a two-page letter, because we had to have documentation. And then I went back, Christian yells at me, but I had artifacts from two thousand and seven when I started. And I kept all the Farm Bureau papers, the newspaper clippings, anything that I have, I have a file. And so some of these are from like when I first started, all the way back. So as much as he makes fun of me, we needed it for this type of thing.
I think it's so easy to kind of forget every, everything you've done, and so it was fun to sit down and talk through, and then just amazing. You know, once you sit down and look at that FTE growth and think of the different course offerings that have come, and how many students that's impacted, so.
And it's hard to condense it to eight pages, because we had to keep our application to eight pages. Matt Anderson helped us a lot too by proofreading, going back and helping us rework, because we were getting over that eight-page limit. So we always go to Matt for our proofreading, so Matt Anderson helped us proofread it, taking it to that eight-page limit. Because to get everything that we had in eight pages, to answer all those, and the rubric was a lot. So thank you for having us, no, we don't like recognition, we like our kids to get recognition, but I appreciate you guys having us. So does anybody have any questions?
Congratulations to you and to Christian, which is quite an accomplishment, and it's nice to see you recognized for the great work you're doing. And I shared with you, but I haven't shared with anybody else, when we were at the FFA banquet this year. A couple of parents came up to me and said their kids would not be in school if it wasn't for your program. And I just think that speaks such loud volumes about what you're doing and actually creating a space to have kids that really struggle at home here.
And when you, and when you go to that, to that program.
You'll see this.
See that? That starts right away. But, but the, the real thing is to celebrate the accomplishment of the students. And, and to see what they're capable of, and to allow them to, you know, really control the show basically, and to showcase their talents. And speak, do public speaking, which, you know, some people would rather die than public, do public speaking. But to see them up there and doing that, and articulating very well, and celebrating their accomplishments and achievements. I, there's no better feeling than that, I mean, it's, it's, that's what we're here for, that's what it's all about, so. You guys have done an outstanding job.
And it's fun to see Gillian Deal is teaching, I have a couple other, Mindy Smith is gonna be student teaching, so it's fun now to see that some of my kids are teaching and have their chapters. And you know, they call me about, you know, with questions, and it's fun. And I just mentored the girl that my student taught with in two thousand and three, she's starting to teach again. And so she actually came up and I mentored, mentored her again, so it's kind of fun to see that. It's really a big family that we live in, our ag world is a really big family, there's a lot of resources. Christian, you know, when we were doing this, applying for this, he called a friend who had already gotten, you know, recognized and asked, you know, what can we do? How can we make this better? So we have that family too, so like, I have our family here, but we have a bigger family too, which is, you know, a lot of people have called and congratulated us, and you know, they see that, so. We care about our kids, we're here for the kids, and that's why I get emotional, because I love what I do, so.
It shows, it shows.
So thanks for having us.
Thank you, Kara. Thanks, Christian.
Anything else?
Nope, that's all I have.
Well, superintendent's report, then.
I don't know how to follow that.
I'm gonna stand up also, gives me a chance to see the screen and kind of be in front of the board. Just like it's gotta be jump-started, I'm not sure, whatever's working, it just needs to be jump-started. So I do have two items under the superintendent's report, just, first one is just an update on the elementary boundary study. We're just kind of in the planning phases of what that study is gonna look like. So Mr. Ryanek, Mr. Ekstrom, and Nicole's not with us tonight, not recently, just to kind of talk through, okay, what are the, what are the big picture items? What are the things that we need to make sure that we cover in the, the boundary study? So just wanna highlight, first of all, two different groups of things that we discussed, discussion items, just kind of in general, what are we looking for? So what are we able to consider? So one of the things I want to stress here is that, time and time again, we've had these conversations about the boundary study, and, and what. My opinion is that when we go through projects like this, we need to kind of throw everything in the log we possibly can. All ideas out on the table, to just, just to consider everything. But quickly, you start to realize that some things, some ideas that fly out there aren't really feasible. So one of the things that we're already recognizing maybe limitations, transportation. So depending on how boundaries might shift, can we, can we, can we handle that with transportation? Do we have the buses, do we have the drivers, things like that? So the first question is, what are we even able to consider right now? What are the intended outcomes? I'll talk about that again in just a second on the next slide. What impact will the outcomes have on our families? So there are things that we're looking for from the, from the district perspective, but we're not blind to the fact that any decision that we make is gonna impact the families in the district. So that's really important to keep in mind. How can we best gather feedback from our student, staff, and community? This isn't just a decision that we'll make at the district level, recommend the board, make a decision and move on. These are things that we'll talk about with the staff and communities, so that we, there will be an opportunity for, for input. We'll also, again, I'll share this on the next slide, but not only gather that feedback, but we'll talk about it at multiple board meetings before there's a point where we make recommendations and the board has to go over anything. One of the other discussion items is just timeline, you know, what does that look like, where do we need to go, and how do things need to happen? One of the other parts of the conversation is resources. So a couple of things I want to highlight here, first of all, VersaTrans software. So now we have software that maps all of the bus routes in the district. We upload students and their addresses from Infinite Campus, which is our student database. VersaTrans takes that, plots all of those students, and you can sit at the computer with a mouse and kind of draw lines on, on what the boundaries might look like. And the impact on the number of students that attend each school, with how that, how that's gonna, how that's gonna impact transportation. That goes hand in hand with a program called Five Lab. So that's software that we use at the district level, not in transportation necessarily, but it will gather all of that information as well. So it will work hand in hand with VersaTrans, and really make it a lot easier than it used to be. You don't have to redraw maps by hand and then, and then count by hand, software does it for you, and it will process changes very quickly. So these are things that we can really do a lot of fiddling with before we make any final decisions. Obviously, we use the, the current boundary map, we use survey results and other feedback from the community, demographic data. All that's housed in Infinite Campus, that's part of the upload to both Five Lab and VersaTrans. And then we'll partner with the city of Sycamore. So what studies have they done, what information do they have, projected growth, things like that, that we need to consider when we're making decisions. So what's the goal of the, of the boundary study? There are a couple of things, first of all, we, we're looking at ways that we may be able to balance enrollment in our elementary schools. Obviously, North Grove is the, is the largest school in the district, it's the largest elementary school in terms of the facility, but it's also got the largest enrollment. Can, can we lessen the load there in terms of enrollment in North Grove if, if we tweak, tweak things a little bit? But that goes, if we do that, then that has an impact on north, may have an impact on southeast, South Prairie, and west as well. So one of the things we're looking at is just how changes to the boundaries might shift enrollment in our elementary schools. Impact on transportation, so if we shift those lines a little bit and, and change, how far students may be walking to school, what kind of impact does that have on transportation? Can it have a positive impact on transportation? Or will any real change, are, are we running pretty efficient right now? In other words, if we make any changes, it's actually gonna have a negative impact on transportation, so that's something that we'll have to weigh. And then obviously, obviously staffing. So any shifts in enrollment can impact class sizes, which can then in turn have an impact on staffing. So those are the three large areas that we're gonna be looking at at, at the boundary study. I didn't talk as much about timeline as I wanted, I'll go back, I'll go to the bottom, bullet here, our goal is to present recommendations to the board during the winter, after the first of the year. So this isn't gonna happen prior to, to Christmas, this is something that will likely happen after. We'll gather information, we'll do some planning at the district level, start to gather that feedback this fall. We won't just talk about it tonight, and then wait until January, February to have a follow-up conversation. These are things that, that we'll talk about on an ongoing basis. In fact, one of the reasons I wanted to talk about it tonight was just to kind of keep it on our radar and not be a shock when it finally comes out. This is something that we talk about on a, on a regular basis. Current discussion items, transportation resources, we'll limit what we're able to do, we talked about that already. Recommendations will be based on not just our findings, but again, feedback from students, staff, and families. And we'll do our best to be transparent throughout the process, so we don't just want to make this decision at the district level. These are decisions that we want to make with input from across the community. I'm gonna pause here and ask if there are any questions from the board about what I've covered so far.
So how will feedback be gathered from students, staff, and families?
The easiest way to get that is, is survey data. So compiling questions that, that we're looking at, providing a little bit of information, and then getting feedback from students and families. We may have, I don't know about focus groups necessarily, but CAC is one of the mechanisms that I anticipate gathering some direct feedback from, from parents here in the community. Could be at board meetings and during public comment. But survey data is probably gonna, gonna be the easiest way to gather a lot of feedback from everybody in the district. Or at least provide that opportunity for everybody in the district to, to give us feedback.
Well, they have an opportunity to have more of a discussion rather than a one-dimensional survey.
So CAC might be an opportunity to do that. It's not really how typical board meetings are arranged, but one of the things that we could consider doing is more of a town hall meeting, just for that topic. So we present, so we present information and then, and then gather. So that would be really easy to, to do, done those in the past, not necessarily here, but done those previously. Pretty easy way to do that.
You have a list of, I know we've kind of talked about discussion points, transportation being one of them. Do you have a list of parameters, prioritized parameters of things to be considering when you're looking at tweaking lines? Like, you know, down the middle of the road versus down the backyards, between houses, things that, that have much more impact on families where kids are growing up together. Versus across the street may not be as, as perjuiced on a younger student. You know, different parameters that you're gonna prioritize as to weight, I guess, when you're making decisions or proposing decisions?
Not necessarily weight, but recognizing that, you know, when you draw a line down the middle of the street, and one side of the street goes to one school and one goes to the other. How, how does that impact students' social lives, families, things like that? So one of the things that was done in the past, some of you may remember this, is that in some cases, whole subdivisions were looked at, as opposed to a line down the middle. Kind of looking at a, a group of homes that are all grouped together. So those are the sorts of things that we'll look at, haven't really assigned a, a weight to that, but we recognize as, as issues already. So again, while we may be looking at a map and numbers, there's a very real, you know, consequence to those things. So those are absolute things we're gonna consider.
And you're gonna have to draw a line somewhere, and when you draw that line, that's gonna have an impact. No matter where it is, whether it's in the middle of the street or behind a house or.
It's, it would be ideal if we kind of had groups of homes and subdivisions, that's not the way it's gonna work all the time. This is not something that I've, I've lived through before, but we've talked about the, the last boundary study here in this district, and talked to other superintendents who've lived through it too. So at some point, there are difficult decisions, and I think the more transparent that we can be, the more opportunity we give for feedback and consider the, the impact, I think that, that our offer gonna be.
Well, one of the things that we have done in the past was to come up with some ideas and some models, and put those together, and then, and then to have a town hall, and invite public comment. And then once we have that kind of comment, I know that in the past, we've even gone as far as to have meetings for each elementary school. Where we had, where we had parents come in and comment about changes to the levels.
Sounds good to me.
So you know, I, I do think there's, there's gotta be ample opportunity for the public to have input into the decision. And it's gonna be difficult no matter what, somebody, you know, somebody's gonna have to go to a different school, basically, like my kids.
And you know, a lot of, so one of the questions I've heard a lot is, how are they gonna change? Do you know how they're gonna change? Where's my, where's my son or daughter gonna go? We don't know that yet.
No.
And, and one of the things I've stressed is that, you know, any changes may be pretty minor. And at the end of the day, we may realize that for whatever reason, that, that the current lines are, are good where they're at. I suspect that, that there will be at least a little bit of tweaking. But right now, I, you know, one of the things I want to press upon the board and in the community is that there's no preconceived, there's not a model that we're hiding in the back, that we're waiting to unveil. And I think, Jim, your point's a really good one. We also don't want to kind of pepper the community with all sorts of information. Part of our job is to distill that down to one, two, three models that make the most sense for the school district. And that just gives family members, community members, when they come to these meetings, an opportunity to just focus on maybe three models, let's say. So I think that's a really good point, and a great approach to this, is hey, these are the three that make the most sense, there are pros and cons to each one. Give us your feedback on each one of these, so that we can weigh all factors possible.
Steve, just a quick question too on the redistricting piece, is, and I, I don't know, maybe all redistricting is always reactive? And you know, the way I understand the problem is, like, if you, if we did in fact know where growth was gonna be in the community ahead of time, redistricting wouldn't happen. Because you would just plot the lines once, you'd know, okay, well, we're gonna have growth in this community, it's gonna fill up in this. But given you don't really have a crystal ball, you don't know where there's gonna be growth in the community, it's hard to plan that. And so if we miss the mark, and like, oh, in North Grove's case, there's this surge of people, but you know, in South Prairie, like, there's undeveloped neighborhoods there that for whatever reason, just aren't getting people. You know, no one could have predicted that. Is there any way, and again, I don't expect you to have this answer, but I guess, looking forward, is there a way that we can be proactive in terms of trying to be a part of, I guess, guidance to development going forward via impact fees? And I, again, I don't wanna kind of touch a lightning rod here with the impact fees, but it just seems like, you know, the feedback I've gotten from home builders, at least in Sycamore, I, I've worked with a lot of them. Is that Sycamore has some of the highest impact fees of any city, and it just seems like that could be a tool in the toolbox to help try to guide growth for new home construction. And again, I don't know, maybe it's like marginal, but just an idea, so.
Yeah, and again, I think we need to look at, at all options out there. So I think, you know, we'll make sure that that's something that we're considering, is, is what that impact, the impact fees is. In terms of development, you're right, if man, we had a crystal ball and knew, hey, the, the growth is gonna be here, easy, right? That's part of why I think that it's important for the city to be involved, Steve, you know, your involvement in the zoning board's gonna be critical. But there's always these unforeseen, right, downturns in the market and developments that we're on, you know, and, and the planning stage, ready to go, all at once kind of fall back. So there will always be unforeseen, you know, changes that we just can't anticipate. Unfortunately, these things need to be done, we try to put them off as long as we can because of the, the impact that it has. But we'll do our best to try to project where development is gonna be, so that when we make any decisions this winter, this coming winter, that is. Those decisions will benefit the school district and families for as long a period of time as possible. So a lot of things that go into this, it's a, I won't lie to you, not having been through this before, it's wrapping my brain around a lot of information. It's a, I won't lie to you, not having been through this before, it's wrapping my brain around a lot of information. But the more we talk about it, and especially this recent planning meeting that we had, it really started to focus down into a more manageable task.
You know, you can't plan for regentrification either. So as people move to 55 and older communities, someone's buying their house. So are they buying their house with no kids, five kids? That's the part that's hard to predict. But I do think, you know, the city's policies have been helpful for us on growth growth because we have been able to, you know, have a number of years without a boundary change, which has been beneficial where high-growth areas are, every three to five years, are having to change boundaries, which is not a fun process. So, you'd have to distill some of that impact fee down as to what's 55 and older, what generates more kids and less kids. And it's doable, but can give us, can give us some insight, but then the regentrification piece is the hard part.
Well, and that's like the impact fee was just, you know, an example, but it's like, I think, how can you be future-focused with something that's a just by nature reactive process? So it's like, maybe you can't be, I don't know.
But, you know, one thing we'll have to consider is at some point, if growth continues, there may need to be another elementary school.
Right.
And then that'll really change the equation quite a bit. So, I mean, we haven't, we haven't rezoned since, redistricted since North Grove was built.
And both of my kids moved. That's the way it works.
So, you know, that's, so that's, you know, there's a, there's just, there's a lot of variables to consider. But I think from what you're describing about VersaTrans and Focus Five there, or...
Five Lab.
Five Lab, that, that's really going to be helpful. We didn't have that in the past when we redistricted. And this is going to really help us greatly because especially if you, you know, have the ability to maybe even see how a change in moving a line affects, you know, populations and whatnot. That's going to really, that's going to be very beneficial.
Yeah, I've seen the development of those software programs over the years, and it's amazing what they can do now compared to what they used to be able to do when they first started.
Yeah, anything like that.
Literally, it's like Google Maps when you're plotting a route, you know, when you're traveling. You just drag that line wherever you want and it will automatically, even though you're students in that area, you can send in on individual students, how far are they walking? Are they farther than a mile and a half now, are they less than a mile and a half? It's amazing. So, VersaTrans would be really good. I think Five Lab will be even more beneficial because it takes some of that information from VersaTrans with all the other information that we have available. So, both of them together are going to be very helpful now. Any other questions for me on the boundary study? Okay. I'm going to shift gears to the next item under superintendent's report. I might just stay up here for you, Mr. Rice, we'll see how this works someday. So, Future Focus, this is the first meeting of the month. So, Future Focused is back on the agenda and the board knows this, some of the attendees tonight may not. We've just kind of set the first meeting of the month as a time where we just, the board has kind of asked me to generate ideas, although I get ideas from the board, about things that we just need to be thinking about as a school district down the road. May be imminent, may be a long ways in the future. But the topic that I chose tonight was personalized learning. So, when last school year started, I really focused on three areas. Reinforcing professional learning communities, that's something that had been in place in the district already. At kind of different levels throughout the school district, but we really kind of reinforced that last fall. We provided PLC training for all of our staff and doing our best to support new staff as they come in. So everybody's trained in the PLC model. We also reinforced our commitment to multi-tiered systems of support. That used to be RTI, now it's called MTSS. It's really a way to individualize monitoring student progress, kind of assessing where students are at, then monitoring their progress over a long period of time. And then the last thing I talked about last year was All Means All. A commitment to supporting learners from all backgrounds, no matter where they come from. Just kind of this belief that every student that comes through our doors is our student. You know, we treat them as we mind our own children. So, those are the three areas that I focused on at the beginning of last year. None of them were brand new. Because the next bullet point says, they were already in place in Sycamore. And those sorts of programs and initiatives are in place in other school districts as well. These aren't, these aren't radical new ideas, they're things that were in place to some degree. Just kind of reinforcing that, especially a year ago, we thought we were coming out of the pandemic. We weren't quite there, as it turns out. But it was also an opportunity to kind of refocus what we were doing within the school district. From a long-term perspective, I think these three goals are critical to supporting each student and individualizing instruction for each learner. So that PLC model where teachers and educators have an opportunity to collaborate and plan together, where we're monitoring individual student progress through MTSS, and then underneath of that, this foundation of supporting all learners. I think all of those things are critical to individualizing instruction for all students. One of the things I'd heard about, but really had not had an opportunity to dive deeper into, was personalized learning. So this past spring, we had an opportunity to attend a workshop in Milwaukee at the Personalized Learning, not the Personalized Learning, Institute for Personalized Learning. And when I attended that, it really kind of helped me to understand how the three pieces that I talked about last fall really are kind of moving us along this continuum towards a model of personalized learning. So, I'm going to read this, I don't typically do this, but I'm going to read this right off of the slide. This comes from the Institute for Personalized Learning. What does personalized learning mean? It's an approach to learning and instruction that's designed around individual learner readiness, strengths, needs and interests. Learners are active participants in setting goals, planning learning paths, tracking progress, determining how learning will be demonstrated. At any given time, learning objectives, content methods and pacing are likely to vary from learner to learner as they pursue proficiency relative to established standards. A fully personalized environment moves beyond both differentiation and individualization. When I first really kind of thought about what personalized learning meant, I really focused on those last two words, differentiating instruction, differentiating instruction for individual learners. What do individual learners need, which goes hand in hand with individualization. But it's more than that, as you can see in the definition that I just read. But I hope that you picked out some of the pieces in that definition to some of the things I've already talked about tonight. Things like tracking progress and for individual students, that's part of what we do through MTSS. So in short, the more I learned about personalized learning, the more I realized that we are already moving in the direction of implementing personalized learning. Whether we call it that or not, we're already moving in that direction. Again, it's not a new initiative, it's not a change in direction, it's the evolution of work that is already going on in our district. Fortunately, although I'm not as well-personed in personalized learning as I would like, we have staff and leaders within our district who are... Like Mr. Rice here. He tried to put it off onto Mr. Countryman, but Mike Rice brings a real wealth of knowledge in terms of personalized learning. So, instead of listening to me talk about something I kind of know about, I'm going to turn the reins over to Mr. Rice, who's going to tell you what he knows.
Awesome. And I promised I wouldn't be too long tonight, although let me talk about something I really love, doing it in a place I really love, and then I'm going to, I'll try to keep it short. Although, better than me talking, I do have a short video here that, it's a little less than five minutes that kind of talks about some of the things Steve just said in a little bit more detail. So if it works, we'll go ahead and start with that one, otherwise I will just launch into my spiel.
As we all know, the world a child grows up in today is very different than the world our grandparents or even our parents experienced. But in some ways, our schools haven't seen the same kind of changes. We now have the opportunity to transform our approach so every child can better engage with their education and their future. Take Jaden, for example. Right now, everyone in Jaden's classes is about the same age. Next year, they'll all move to the next grade together. Teachers instruct and assess all their students at the same time in basically the same way. At the end of a lesson, the class moves on, even if some students don't yet understand the concepts. This process made sense when it was designed over a hundred years ago, and it still works for some kids. But for a lot of children, it can hold them back, leave them behind, or leave them bored. This is the age of information. Much of what was once known only to experts and educators can now be accessed by almost anyone, anytime. So information alone is no longer enough. Students have to learn how to problem-solve, collaborate, analyze and think critically. And at the same time, educators today know so much more about how the brain works and how to help kids learn best. More and more educators are using a personalized, student-centered approach to reach all learners, facilitate deeper understanding and connection to the material, and accelerate their progress. Here's Isabella, who's also 12. Her school is a personalized learning environment. When you think about it, all of her learning is really a personal experience. We only learn if we make a connection or if we're able to put information in some sort of context. Every minute of our lives, we encounter stimuli that could result in learning. Yet we only notice, engage and absorb a small portion of what we could learn. And the same stimulus might engage one person while going completely unnoticed by another. So to ensure that those connections are made as often as possible by all our kids, we need to start with a deep understanding of each learner. With her teacher's help, Isabella completed a learner profile at the beginning of the year. It describes things like her learning preferences, interests, learning history, strengths, challenges, and readiness to learn. She and her teachers frequently refer to and update the profile. They use it to keep focused on what Isabella as a unique human being needs to learn, why she needs to learn it and the ways she learns best. Not only does Isabella work with her teachers to set her own learning goals, they'll also decide together how she's going to demonstrate that she's completed them. Isabella helps decide how she'll prove that she's mastered a standard or concept. As soon as she demonstrates proficiency, she gets to move on. We have the technology now to support this process at scale with all learners. Isabella at various times will work by herself, with one other learner, or in a group. Sometimes she receives direct instruction from the teacher, other times she works online or completes an interdisciplinary project. These strategies change to best fit her learning needs depending on the learning task and the content. Isabella is able to advance at a pace that works for her. She might be ahead of her peers in some areas and behind them in others, but all of the students know that they will truly understand the material before having to tackle new learning tasks. Isabella finds meaning and purpose in the work that she does. Sometimes she can dig deeply into a topic of interest. She was able to demonstrate her understanding of the water cycle by studying the red-eyed tree frog. Spelling and analyzing text are Isabella's least favorite topics, but she still has to work on them. She knows she often struggles with these, and that means she needs a quiet place to work. She gets to choose one, and a nonfiction book of choice. She can also seek help from her friend. Grace is a year younger than Isabella, but that doesn't matter. They both happen to be working on the same standard. When Isabella and her teacher are satisfied that she fully understands the learning task, they will meet to set new goals for her together and update her profile with the new information. Isabella is an important partner in these conversations and she sees value in learning what she does. She does it for herself, not to comply with the demands of adults. The personalized learning experience that Isabella and her classmates are engaged in ensures that they have voice and choice in their learning. It's helping them become independent learners. And most importantly, they're building the knowledge, skills and dispositions that will help them thrive today and well into the future, no matter how the world may change. A model to help implement these ideas in the classroom is available at the website of the Institute for Personalized Learning, a division of Wisconsin State law.
There's so much to unpack in that video. So before I even get started, I would absolutely love it, and this is your call, not mine, and Mr. Wilder, your call, if you wanted to explore this at a board admin retreat sometime, where we could have a little more conversation. I'm up to that task, if you'd like me to be. And if only we had a department here that was really good at this already, I don't know, like our ag department? I think you probably heard in that video some of the things that sets them apart. And I just kind of said, guys, I'm sitting here thinking, well, like, there's eight schools in the entire country that get to this, going, like, this is huge, like, it's, Karen, I know you cried, but like, it's bringing it up in me. It's insane. And so I think before we even start talking about personalized learning, the goal is not to overhaul a Sycamore education at all. We're doing awesome things here. The goal is to systematize some of that and empower staff like we have right now to do even more. So, I'm getting a little buzzard, thanks. Oh, there we go. So let's talk about some of these things, right? Steve, you did a great job kind of setting us up for this, and you guys have heard some of these things. And honestly, it's kind of your fault because if you think all the way back to Chuck Shuan and Matt's customized learning, anybody remember those days?
Yes.
This is the evolution of that. So we were on the cutting edge for quite some time and thinking about these processes, and though we never really implemented it here like whole hog, those things stuck here. I remember being in room with Sarah Turner and Denise Jenke, and I don't remember who was there for math, but some, I think probably Andy Moore. And those things then spread out into our departments. And you see a lot of this philosophy in our district already. So we're not talking about, hey, we're doing it wrong, we need to change. We're talking about all these things that are going well. How do we kind of align them so that we're all moving in the same direction? So I won't read everything to you, but that's personalized, our professional learning communities, right? To meet with a student and say, what do you know about yourself? What are your goals? What are these challenges that you have that you need to consider while we're learning this content or this topic? You have to have a really strong understanding of what that content and what those topics are, what came before and what comes next. So if you don't talk about some of those things that are essential to a PLC, what those critical outcomes and essential outcomes are, you don't talk about what kids need to be able to do and learn, you don't talk about how you're going to learn or to know that they learned it, this doesn't work. So those processes are a key piece of this. I think one challenge that I personally lived through is PLCs have been around for quite some time and this is kind of starting to gain steam. So PLC, as we kind of first imagined it, or as we have kind of implemented it throughout the years in Sycamore, will probably have to change a bit, but we're in a perfect place to do that because we've already kind of reinvested in that structure. MTSS is the same thing, multi-tiered systems of support. When we talked about RTI, it was very structured. And it needed to be because it was very aligned with special education and making sure that we could get students places appropriately. Quickly, schools, especially higher-level schools, like six through 12 schools, realizing that doesn't work for us. We just basically need to say, by any means possible, let's help these kids. And that's really what MTSS is. But when we start, I'm trying so hard not to talk forever, but when we get, when we get into personalized learning, what you're really thinking of is that framework of, by any means necessary, I want to help these struggling learners, but take it beyond struggling learners. I have 30 students in front of me, what's that one need, what's that one need, what's that one need? But it's not, the teacher's not making that choice, so I'll get to that a little bit later. But that philosophy fits right in with multi-tiered systems of support. And all means all has to happen in a personalized environment. Every single teacher in that building has to believe, and the district really has to believe, I'm responsible for this student's wellbeing. Because every single teacher has something to offer, and it may not be the person that's sitting in that classroom with them, but you hurt, like, there's resources that you can go to, there's trusted adults that you have to be able to have. You have to feel like you're part of this team. And that's why I even say, beyond just recognizing what all students bring to the table, I think we have to kind of instill a mindset of risk-taking and growth mindset. All of our kids can learn, they will learn, as long as we believe that. And we have to take some risks to show that. I'll stop. I'll keep going, maybe, if the kids are going to be like, let me click on them as well, thank you. So where does that leave us as Sycamore? We have all these great things going on and we want to start to align some of this work and make sure that we're, like, I always kind of say it this way, we're all kind of moving in the same direction, but one person's kind of pulling this way and one person's pulling this way. Imagine if we were all just going straight, we'd go so much faster. So this is one structure for doing that. Mr. Reineck was nice enough for me to kind of pass it around hand out so you don't have to turn around and look up at that board the whole time. This is just a change model. There's really not a whole lot going, like, we don't have to live or die by this, but it's something that has been helpful in my past and it's something in a lot of districts that I've worked with and for have seen some use in. It's, they call it their Honeycomb Framework. And this is put together by that Institute for Personalized Learning that Mr. Wilder talked about. And I'll talk a little about how this thing kind of works. So if you look at on your paper or you look at the board, there's all these different color-coded cells. Those three running down the middle are kind of what they call their core component cells. And if you kind of start there, so you heard them talk about a learner profile in that video. Learner profile is basically just a big get-to-know-you sort of thing that has a little bit more meat to it. You'll hear me talk about that a little bit more later, I won't go too much in depth right now. When you start in the middle with those core cells that are all very student-centric, you're talking about learner profiles, you're talking about them being able to advance on their own proficiency, you're talking about them having a voice in their learning path. All of those are very student-centered. When you start there and then start working out, and I'll talk about these different cells in a minute, you're progressing with the learner in mind and that's what we should be doing. We've been talking about that all night. When we started that outside, which everybody does, we all get ideas and we want to do them. And I can pick things that are happening at the high school from when I was there that I didn't do right because I started on the outside and worked my way in. We all do that, but we need to be able to kind of reframe some of that. So our goal is to start in the middle of this and work out. And our first focus here in Sycamore, hopefully, will be that learner profile. We already have a few places that are piloting it. Tim, of course, likes to just pick things up and run, so I had to kind of slow him down a little bit. But he's also, he's already hoping to kind of pilot some of that with the high school staff. I'm hoping, our staff and even some of our admin haven't even seen this yet, so they'll hear it tomorrow. But I'm hoping to kind of get some pilot group... But I'm hoping to kind of get some pilot groups throughout the district while they get some feedback on that learner profile and what that could look like and how we could use it. But to talk a little bit more about those three core cells. So I talked already about the learner profile. This is so much information, but it's really less about the teacher, and it's more about the student. The student fills that out and reflects on their learning. Think, this is very similar to Danielson for teachers in our evaluation process. That turned into an evaluative tool, but it started as a tool for a teacher to reflect on who they are, what they're good at, what they want to get better at. And this is very similar to a learner profile. The next step down there is these customized learning pathways. This will probably be, I don't know, a couple of years down the road, but we already have some of these things happening in pockets. This twist on it though kind of gives the student a little bit more voice in that. I think a traditional high school, right, we set up these classes and we say, you've got to take this, then this, then this, then this. What if we could lift some of that and within those classes, kind of like our Ag Department was talking about already, we have to study this topic, but how do we want to get there? And that can go to every level. I've seen it happen down in second, third, first grade. And then find this idea of proficiency-based progress, and this will be the one that pushes some of us outside of our comfort zone the most. And rightly so, because it asks a lot of questions that I don't know there's easy answers to. But when a student's demonstrated mastery, right now, they sit in that classroom. I might take a pre-test on the first day of the unit and blow it out of the water, but for the next four weeks, I'm sitting there in that unit because that's how school's structured right now. Well, there's a whole bunch of stuff that happens when we start to say, it doesn't have to be that way. It doesn't have to be that way. We can either enrich them, we can have students explore something else, we can have them take a couple of classes at once even. There's a million ways to kind of slice that up, but it's hard. And I think once we start thinking about, well, what if all kids don't get to the same place by the end of the year? Or what if we have a kid that gets halfway through a class? I don't know the answer to that yet, but I think we can start to ask some of those questions. These things aren't things that happen over a year. They're not things that happen over five years. Much like the PLC process, schools that are doing this well have been doing it for almost a decade. So it's not like we're just going to flip the switch overnight, oh, we're a personalized learning school. Very similar to PLCs, you don't just say that. You have to live it, you have to explore it, and you really have a lot of work to get there. If you look at that document again, kind of, I can talk about some of the colors of those cells. On the backside of that document, it's a little bit more in-depth than what I'll give you right now because I'm already over kind of what I wanted to do. But our yellow cells there are kind of the next things up. So for example, if we start in Sycamore this year, starting talking about a learner profile, that's very student-centered. That's one of the core things that we have to talk about. Possibly then the following year, or maybe the next year after that, but pretty quickly, what we'd want to start looking at are these yellow cells that talk about the practices in the classroom. So learning and teaching practices that our teachers use, learning practices that our students use, and what do we want to change to kind of help, now that we've got this learner profile, we know more about our students, how does that change our practice? From there, then we start talking about relationships and roles in the district. So an example, that might be instructional coaches, things like that, or facilitators, or interventionists. How do we use all of these different people in these different roles and all these relationships that we can leverage to help that learner reach their goals? And then finally, what you want to start thinking about third, maybe further down the road, is what systems and structures have to change throughout the entire district to be able to support some of these pieces? And I think we start thinking about it that way. It's natural that sometimes we think about that backwards. Okay, we have to change the schedule of the school day because that's going to help us do this, 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 and this, but we missed it because we didn't start with what the students need. We started, we changed the outside first. What this eventually then lends itself to is as we start to build our knowledge and as we start to understand a little bit more about each of these different levels of cells, staff, district, admin, at every level, we can start to build what we call these constellations. And if you turn around and look up at the slides, you don't have to. But basically, it's you pick these different honeycomb cells that you want to work with, and that becomes your pathway for the year. This is what I want to focus on. It's what I want to learn about. It's the experience I want to provide for my students. And it's the growth I want to achieve professionally as well. So it helps teachers really hone in on what they want to achieve, and it helps then support students in an even greater way. Helps us really make sure we know that we're focusing on the right things as opposed to what can seem so overwhelming at times. So you'll hear us talk about these constellations a little bit more. And then one thing I just want to, I kind of started this way too, but the goal isn't to go and live in personalized all the time. That's impossible. It just wouldn't work. It, not every student learns that way, just, that's the bottom line, really. And so when you think about personalized learning, the institute will often talk about these three different levels. Right now, we live very often in differentiated instruction. I would say our teachers are awesome at that. We do not have teachers in this district that just teach one way and say, you got better at learning if you don't. I'm sorry. Our teachers care about our kids, and that creates that differentiated instruction approach. Many of our teachers take it to the next level, and they start to think about, okay, Johnny needs this, Suzie needs this, Billy needs this. And they start thinking specifically themselves about, how do I give this student a really meaningful experience? That's awesome, but imagine how hard that is when you're dealing with all of those kids. It takes a lot out of a teacher. So that next evolution, when you actually get to personalized learning, instruction, instruction, learning. Who's responsible for the learning? We all are, but that puts a lot more emphasis on that student. So when you really make this shift, and that's why that last line of that definition where it talks about moving beyond differentiated and individualized to a personalized learning environment, the student is at the center. In that video, you heard, I can't even remember her name, but our main character, she was taught, she met with that teacher. They made those plans. When she did well on it, she reflected on that and said, okay, what's my next step? How do I want to learn this? That's when it were really truly personalized. And that can happen every day. And so one of the teachers' goals then too is to say, what are our goals right now, and what's the best way to kind of get there? And well, everybody will kind of dip their toes in all of these different kind of parts of the water. So, my last slide, what's next? All right. So I try to keep it somewhat contained. I think I went over by about 10 minutes, but. So, we need to continue all the implementation of all those things that we're doing. If we stopped working on PLCs or MTSS or all means all, we'd be dead in the water already. Like, we cannot ever achieve a personalized learning environment unless we're really good at those things too. So we're going to keep working on PLCs, MTSS, and all means all. We need as a district, if this is the direction we're going to go, to make sure that everybody understands what personalized learning means. When I say personalized learning, everyone in the room needs to go, oh, that's what he's talking about. The definition Steve shared was a little long, so probably one of the first steps that we'll do as a district is come together and say, what does this mean for Sycamore? When we say personalized learning, every student, every stakeholder knows that's what it means. So we'll work on a definition. We'll partner with the institute. They know what they're doing. They're a national organization. They have a national conference every year. They've helped tons of districts kind of move closer to this. They have cohorts for district leaders. They have cohorts, you all would be more than welcome to come in and learn more about as well, to kind of plan this work. So something that was extremely powerful for me was to sit there with a group of district leadership with them and basically create our five-year plan. It's not something we have to build completely alone. We can work with people that have done this and experts in the field to create, here's what it looks like. And when we do that, it comes along with, what are we looking for? What's the data look like? What are some of our expected roadblocks and how will we respond? So it's not just one of those nice pieces of paper that I'm really good at making, but it's actually more of a living deck, right? Staff, they do the same thing for staff. We've already got staff doing this. We're looking at some of them right now. So how do we connect them with others that are doing it? And those that are like, that sounds awesome, I want to do it. How do we connect them with people that can do it? So we can send them to some schools to see this going on. We can put them into cohorts with this institute as well, where they can connect with other practitioners, learn some of this philosophy that's not just coming from me, it's also coming from people outside of the organization, and they get a chance to grow themselves as well. We'll have to draft that Sycamore learner profile. Again, that's kind of different for every single district that wants to roll this out. So one of the first steps we would want, after we get that definition, build that foundational understanding, what does that learner profile look like for us? What does it look like at different levels? How do we use it? How is it stored? How is it shared? A lot of questions go into that. It seems really easy. Oh, but we can't, then we use the PowerPoint slide, but it's not that easy. It took years, and they're still working on changing it. And then finally, how do we support innovative staff within our district and the things they're trying? How do we celebrate them? How do we, you know, give them kudos when they take that risk? I've got some plans on that, well, on that as well. Maybe I'll save that for another meeting. So, that's, that's that. I hope there are some questions. I'd love to stand up here and talk about it a little bit more, so feel free, if you've got anything, send them my way. Otherwise, I want to sit down and come back another time.
So Mike, three slides ago, would you just, would you be able to pan that? Oh, I'm sorry.
This one?
You wrote that one right there. So, it's so funny that you're, well, maybe it's not, maybe it's just coincidental.
Sure.
But this has been so relevant to what I've been looking into as I prep, and I'm just trying to understand the personalized learning piece. So like, you described two examples initially. You're like, this is what instruction looks like my way to the highway. Then you described the individualized instruction where it's like, okay, here. But then, the personalized learning piece, I don't, is there, and the video was nice, where can I give you some of those examples? But it seems to me it's all about the learner profile, and at least that's like the hub of it, like what you've described here, like, everything's on that learner profile. What is it, is that what the proprietary blend to Sycamore will be? Will our learner profile be different from any other district, like what it's composed of?
It will. I think it'll have a lot of similarities to other districts, but I think that's the part we can kind of build and make our own. And really, I would say, kind of what drives it is less learner profile and more the relationships with the students. And to me, that learner profile is a vehicle to that relationship. I think you can personalize learning without that. The institute might fight me on that, but I don't think you really need it. I think if you've got, if you build strong relationships with students, you have those conversations about their goals, you know where they need to be by the end of the semester, and you can say, you're really good, the data comes into this big time. You're really good at this, but not so good here. How can we get you a little better on this? And if you can have that conversation without a learner profile, great. But it also is an opportunity for that student to reflect. And the system that we're in right now, there's not a lot of, I guess, metacognition required out of students at times. It's, here's what our unit's going to be, here are your ICAN statements. When you can do this, I'm going to give you a test and tell you how good you did on it. And then like they kind of said, now we're moving on to the next unit. That student doesn't, some of our best do, but it's not built into every single period to say, why did you score the way you did? What about this interested you and what didn't? So I think as much as it is that tool for driving kind of instruction and learning, it's also training students to be more, I guess, reflective on how they learn and what they want to learn. So it's key to the process, but it's a tool to get us to a place as opposed to like the number one thing. Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, and I guess, I don't know, I won't monopolize the question.
Please do.
The learner profile, like, I could see it would just take off at kindergarten, and then, you know, you kind of build on that, and it's just like, it's really great finished product at like 12th grade. But then, I think, what about somebody in 11th grade, like, kind of jumping in now? Like, how, it seems like there'd almost be a lot more reflective work. Is it, I mean, how do you, how do you address a learner profile for somebody who's almost through the system?
I think you're right. I think that it's just, it won't be as robust, right? And so I think as a student, if we were to start this right now, those students in 11th and 12th grade won't have that same full experience that a student in fifth or sixth will. We're going to do everything we possibly can. They just haven't had the reps. They haven't had the years to say, this is how I learn, this is what I think about. It doesn't, it's not natural for them. So I think you're right. There is kind of that, as we implement something like this, it won't be really at full, I guess, full speed until a few years down the road. But I think that's why we have to be even more intentional about those conversations. You heard it a lot last year, right? I think one of the things that people feel slipped during COVID were those relationships, and were some of those SEL concerns. So I think this is really kind of fortuitous, like you said, it's kind of funny the way things line up. To go into a school year saying, what we really need to do to make sure we can help our students achieve academically is invest in relationships. And here's the academic side of that. We were all feeling it. I think every single teacher, every single parent, everybody in this room could tell someone was missing last year about those connections with kids. And I think so, one, just addressing that would go, like, crazy far, but this is going to help us take that and then really leverage it into more academic growth.
Well, that's, I would love to do a workshop, like a board workshop on this, so I hope.
All right. I'm in.
I can't think of a better person, as I said in another meeting, to be doing this because your enthusiasm is contagious.
Wow. This is very similar to PLCs and at some, like, when, there's certain things, and I'm sure we all have it in our fields, I've just been in education. But when you kind of hear it and you get it, there's no, you can't, you can't un-hear it. It just changes who you are and how you think about things, and this is definitely one of those for me, and I really hope. It's invigorating, and I hope for our staff that, you know, has been, gone through some years, this will help them kind of find, not that they've lost their love, but I think they, they don't, it's been tough. And I think this will help them kind of get some of that passion back and feel like, what I do is awesome and is meaningful. And I'm, you're right, I get jacked up about this. I'm sorry.
Wish it could be passionate.
Well, this, next time I'll be super, super chill.
Is it, is it different than MCL?
It is. I think mass customized learning was definitely more technologically driven. And I think it was, in my opinion, more based on like getting to the end line as fast as you could. And I don't say that in a bad way at all. Like, I think there's still a lot of educational structures that are about that, and it even kind of came through in that video. I mean, you talk about perfect, well, when they make their proficiency, they can move on. Great. But the goal of education isn't to just get kids through content. It's to help them become learners and thinkers. And I think what, that's what's so cool about this as opposed to maybe mass customized. I don't think there was that piece of getting to know kids as well. I don't think there was that piece of giving them the voice and choice. It was still very structured by, I remember the units I planned. It was, if you can show me on your pre-test that you're ready, I'll give you your assessment, I'll let you move on to unit two. But that was about as, still very individualized. I was running everything. And the students didn't have a lot of voice in what they wanted to learn or how. And so I think that's a huge shift on this one, and it gives that student, it puts them smacked out in the middle of everything. And it'll take us time to get there, but that's, that's probably the biggest change that I can see.
I would add on, and maybe this goes to your question a little bit, Michael. You know, when students get to 10th, 11th, 12th grade, they've been through school for, you know, 10, 11 years by then, right? But this is more than just about getting kids through school. It's about more than just the content. By the time students graduate, what we want for them to know is, here's who I am as a person. So when I go out in the workforce, and when I go to school, or when I go to the military, whatever the case may be, I know who I am, how I operate. Sure, I still have things that I need to work on. Michelle would tell you that I am not an audio learner. If I see it, I'm really good. She tells me something, it's kind of in my. Man, if I'd have known that 20 years ago, I would have made her a lot happier than I do today. But, so it's more than just school. It's more than just content. It's more than just how fast can we get through this. I think one of the differences to me is that this is about truly developing full child in the K-12 educational environment, but then for life beyond that too. So I'm just going to throw that in there.
I think that you agree with that. Totally. And I think you saw that kind of in the video when it kind of alluded to the, her weakest subjects, about spelling and text analysis. So she knows she has to sit in a quiet place. Like, that's, that's exactly what you're talking about. Equipping students to be thoughtful like that. All right, I'm awesome at science. I have a test coming up in a week. I can review this in a night and be fine. English paper that I have to, no, no, I need to make sure that I have a structured approach to this and get some help. Whereas right now, I would say probably a lot of our students are waiting for their teachers to tell them that as opposed to them really having that as an internal part of like their dialogue. So, and believe, this isn't a magic bullet. This stuff's not, it's going to happen, but that's the goal, right?
So I'm excited about it too because it's something that I or we as a board have talked about, getting away from the whole box. Just thinking out of it, but getting away from the box. But I imagine there's going to be challenges, so I'm asking, how, how do you foresee addressing those challenges three and five and seven years down the road relative to, like you said, letting a student be more engaged in making the choices on what, you used the word what they want to learn.
Yep.
Not how they want to learn. That makes total sense.
Sure.
Because I'm a visual learner, and I have a hard time picturing theoretical things. But I can look at the same thing, show me a concrete beam, I can do the same math. Show me a free body diagram, no chance. But there are certain things they have to learn in the curriculum to meet state standards and all that kind of stuff. So how do you align what they want to learn in a particular topic with what they, what they're required to learn?
Sure. Great. That's a great question. I think that, that comes to, that's a really good question. So in the definition, I think a little bit in the video this came through, you're usually not doing all of, the choice isn't completely the students. So I think at times, they might be choosing what they want to learn. So I'll draw my background. You know, say, I was an English teacher at the high school level. Say, we're going to talk about friendship, and I want students to really explore the concept of friendship and write about how they've seen that in a novel. They can read various novels. We don't all have to read The Kilimaki Bird. So there's a choice where they might decide what they want to learn. And I want to, I want to read this, or this is the, this is the avenue I want to get there. There may be times where I say, no, we all have to know this skill, but the choice you can make is, I'm going to give a lecture today, or I've recorded a flipped lesson, and you can watch that. Or they might get the choice of, we're all going to learn about the same thing, and you're all going to stand here and listen to me, but when it comes time to show that you know it, you can write a paper, you can present to me what you want. So there's different types of choice students can have. And every student's different, and I think most schools where you see this happen, it really blows up in a small pocket. And then what happens, like, so you have almost like a school within a school, and it's very personalized in almost every single thing they do. Not every student learns that way. So what's, what you then really see is the majority of the district is implementing some of these as they can, and there's still a whole section of students that are just very, I guess, traditional learners. And that's that art of teaching piece too, knowing what am I drawn most to? Where would I be most effective, and what do my kids need right now? So there's a lot of different, and again, this is maybe something that is, it's just, there's so much more I could talk about. But there's so many places to make those choices and give students that voice. Doesn't always have to be like, well, what do you want to learn about today? Could be, because maybe what you're really focusing on is their ability to write. I don't care what you learn about, just make sure you write about it when you do, you know, so that, there's just a lot of ways. Oh, that's it. All right.
No, no, no.
Wait, I'm going to wait.
It, I think Steve touched on what I was wondering about, and that is, we've kind of glossed over, how, how do we know that they've mastered a skill?
Exactly. So part of, and this is where the PLC work comes in really important. So part, when you're writing your curriculum, what this approach would say is not only do we talk about what essential outcomes are, but we talk as a teaching group, so all fifth-grade teachers or all freshman English, what does that mastery look like? So on my rubric, when it says, I can create a topic sentence, what does that look like? So that no matter how, what they show me, if it's not just a paper, if it's something, this is where we have to really get good at rubric writing, everybody's helped, being helped with the same level of rigor, and we're all, we've all kind of predefined that and shared that with the students. So in order for you to show me you're proficient, you've got to be able to check these boxes, or be able to do this task, or some of those. or be able to do this task, or some of those things. So that's, that will come back as part of that PLC process. When we have staffs that are, teachers and staff that are doing curriculum revision, we'll create what that mastery looks like.
I mean, we can change as much as we want the way we teach, but I don't think the state is going to follow us.
No, and that's fine.
And so that's going to be, I see that as a potential problem.
Sure. Well, so the state, over the last few years, Illinois has had that, they've opened a proficiency-based pilot, because they want to try to see schools doing this. So Huntley down the road has done this, they have their Vanguard Academy. And there's schools that are trying to get there. But you're right, there's just some content, and you guys have all kind of hit on this, that has to be taught. And so that might be a place where we do come back to a more traditional approach and say, these are things that the state, the nation, whatever it may be, say we have to teach. And it's so important that you all know that we are going to go through it together. And that's why it's not, we don't always want to live in personalized, there's different places we can go. So you're right, and that's a huge part of the challenge, defining what that mastery looks like and making sure that there's kind of no holes in that curriculum and that everything that we are supposed to teach and that students are supposed to learn is being addressed. But that's not easy, you're right.
Yeah, I see it as being much more adaptable to certain areas of the curriculum. But like in math, I think it would, especially advanced mathematics, I think that would be very difficult to.
It can be much more, you're right. I honestly had that exact same thought this morning, I was like, if they asked me about different, and I was trying to think about math. And I think, you know, I was kind of thinking more on the lower end, not lower, but I guess earlier end. You may just show that, you may demonstrate that knowledge differently.
That goes to my comment earlier. So I had to take four structures classes as an undergraduate. And the first two were very theoretical, statics and dynamics. Struggled mightily. Took steel and concrete in the same semester, aged both of them, because I'm looking at the same math. It's the same, it's the same math. But I'm visualizing it as a concrete beam with steel rods in it, and what is it doing? I'm not looking at a cloud with a bunch of vector arrows. That's how I would learn, that may be the opposite for somebody else. So they can still learn the same core math. It's just maybe that choice is, are you a visual learner, or you, you know, what type of learner are you? And again, my other question is, you know, since you've done a version of MCL as an instructor in the years past, what does it look like for a teacher putting a lesson plan together in this type of a setting?
Sure.
I, I, I'm, it's not, I'm not saying it's not a deal breaker, I'm just trying to visualize as a teacher, what do I now have to do to be able to implement or execute this type of a model?
Sure. So I wondered about that so much, that's why I came here. So that's why I left my job and came back to English seriously, because I was, as you can tell, a little passionate about this, and I wanted to try to live it. And then it sucked me back into the admin world, so now here I am talking to you guys. But it's hard, but I think what's harder is individualizing. And I think that's the heart of most of our staff right now, is they are creating individualized lesson plans for many of their students. But that's all on them. And so I think when you can create a situation, like, I guess you asked for a more of a nuts and bolts kind of answer. I, you know, I'll take, and I have to give some credit to Greg Daddario for this, because he's the one that kind of helped me get there, even though, you know, I've been living this, and here he is in Sycamore, and he's helping me figure this stuff out, which is why I say our staff is killing it. He did like this 10% project. So what, we kind of just put out, here are the things that we need to see from you. I want to see, it was a culminating project. So I need to see your ability to craft an argument, I need to see your ability to draw in resources from all these other places, and I need to see these things. Your job is to do that in a way that's some sort of activism approach. I don't care what it is. And so from that point on, then what it was, was a lot of conferences with students. What topic do you want to use these skills on? How are you going to show these to me? The way this project evolved, it kind of all came to a website that they all developed, but at first, that's not what it was. They could have been through a website, it could have been through a letter-writing campaign, it could have been through a public awareness sort of thing. But given, so it really comes down to making time for those conversations, making the expectations really clear. There's definitely some work, there was very traditional style teaching that happened in class before that. We had to acquire some skills, we had to demonstrate them and prove that we could do it. And then I could kind of say, all right, you guys have shown me throughout the year that you can do this. So now that I want you to bring it all together, let's talk about how you're most comfortable doing that. And I would say that's really, probably still closer to individualize than personalize, because I gave them a lot of parameters. But that's the sort of lesson plan that starts to take place. It just shifts from me thinking, all these things, I have to create these activities for the student, and really trying to let them have that voice. It really comes down to those conversations with kids. And just to kind of, I'm going to add yet one more plug, when you were talking about that math class, how long have we been talking about trying to get the geometry and ag going? So I, you'll probably see it this year. It kind of answers your question. That student that maybe doesn't understand geometry in a math classroom, put them in the egg shop, and they're going to get it, because they're building something. And now they see why they need to know about rise over run, and they didn't realize that's what slope was. So I think there's just so many ways we can think about these things. I'm excited to do it.
If, if I'm understanding this correctly, there are things that are easier for me to learn because of my learning style. There are topics and subjects that I like to learn. And I would want to take and pursue those. And it's not going to really make a difference about the stuff I don't like to do, and I don't like to learn, and I don't feel comfortable learning. So what happens when we run up against somebody who's like, well, I'm going to play in my own, my own sandbox, and I'm just, I'm, the heck of those things?
I think that's a challenge we hit with mass, when you asked about kind of the difference between mass customized. That was a challenge we hit, where we couldn't conceptualize that. And I think just we've come past, it's, there are some things that are non-negotiables. So you talk about like your learning style. I think for a long time in education, we thought, okay, if I have a visual learner, then everything I give them needs to be visual. But I think we've gotten to a place where, no, those things that are really hard for them to learn and acquire, we should probably do through visual. But those things that they're more naturally drawn to, let's push them out of their comfort zone. So for you, those things that you really enjoy, maybe I would ask you to think of, what's a way that you have, a way to show me that learning that maybe you're not super comfortable with? You're not a dancer, per se. So create, maybe you are, I'm sorry, but create a, create some sort of like a, I don't know, performative dance routine that shows what the cell relationships, I don't know, something like that, that pushes that learner out of their comfort zone. But then when they're in the math world, and they're like, I got this, or I don't have any idea, then we make sure it's a little more visual. So I think as we use that learner profile, we learn about those students, how do we line all this stuff up so that they don't just shy away from the challenges? Or they don't just always lean on their preferred learning styles? So that they do come out, like Mr. Wilder said, a little bit more well-rounded? And all this stuff's really easy to say, it's a lot harder to execute. But they're really good questions, because those are the places where you have to get people in a room and start talking about, how do we do this? But that's one of those things that learner profile, kind of like you had said, will help us with. Because we'll have more information about our students, and over time, they'll get better at talking about those things with their teachers too.
We'll need to push them beyond their comfort zone.
Oh, yeah. Yes, we will.
Mike, just off the, your point too, I think, my understanding is, a lot of it is the critical thinking piece. And everything you're saying, it just reminds me, I was in AP Physics, I had a friend Franklin. He was really great at physics, but he was supposed to present, did terribly. I mean, it was a terrible presentation. He works, he's a senior executive for LinkedIn right now. Out in California, I mean, huge, huge guy, doing some big projects for him. But what he, what's something I learned from Franklin was, the style of learning for him, the style of teaching didn't work. But what he did understand was how to learn, and he got that from, in this case, Jenke physics. Well, Ms. Jenke, she taught him. And she taught him, not necessarily, I mean, the material was there, but how to learn was so big. And so I think the more we can move towards how to learn, I think that's going to just build this amazing group of future learners. And hopefully, they'll be able to pick up math like he describes. So I really like the ideology, I'm excited about it.
Me too, I'd agree. Thank you for your time, literally, any time stop me the door just where I don't care, I'll talk about it. I'm happy to do it. And we have some great people on our staff that are doing it, some of them know and some of them don't. So they'll be able to talk to you about it.
At the next board admin retreat, we can do interpretive dance too.
That's what I was looking for.
I'm not doing that.
I do want to highlight that learning style. I do want to highlight a couple of things that Mike touched on that I think are really important, just, not new, but they're so important, I think it bears reinforcing.
Sorry.
No, because you said this, it's a marathon, not a sprint. So we got all kind of excited about this after the PD that we experienced at the Institute. We're ready to start this like this year, like, are we going to do this Wednesday, right? When kids first. One of the things that Mike said that's really important is that there are schools that are doing this really well. They've been doing it really well for 10 years. And I think they would still tell you, man, we're just still trying to figure this out. Right? So it's a, it's a process. And I want you guys to know, I want our staff to know, the expectation is not that we start this on Wednesday, other than we start chipping away at this, you know, Wednesday, Wednesday, start to show up and developing this plan and this vocabulary, and starting with those internal kind of honeycomb items.
It seems like that's actually a tentative, this plan is that you don't want to go, okay, we're all set, and it's not going to change for the next 15 years.
And you can't have a point.
But you continually want it to adapt to.
Absolutely. Times will change, right? Kids will change, the environment, society changes. So it will always be a work in progress, but our hope is that, you know, through a five-year plan, we realize, after we look back after five years, we've made a ton of progress. We've still got a long way to go, but we've made a ton of progress. And lastly, we got great teachers doing some of this awesome work already. So we're not starting from the ground up, we're really just trying to align things a little bit as we move down that road. So nice job, Mr. Rice, I appreciate your, your presentation.
A little long, sorry.
I think it's exciting, I think it's reflective of the world we live in today. I think it's the next step on the Chakshavani Road to evolution. And so I think, I do think it's exciting, and I look forward to working on it as we go, as we go forward. And there will be a lot of, there'll be a lot of issues, I'm sure, and, you know, twists along the way. But I think it's, in the long run, it's going to be very beneficial for our students.
That's it for the superintendent board, not much tonight.
Not too much. So we'll move on then to open discussion and future agenda items. Anything for open discussion or issues are up?
I just ran across some interesting data last week, and it's not necessarily a discussion, I'll just pass out copies, but it's school system funding across the country. As of 2020, according to the US Department of Commerce and the US Census Bureau, they break it into four regions, Midwest, Northeast, West, and South. And where they spend the most per pupil, you might guess, would be in the Northeast. New York, Connecticut, Vermont, New Jersey, Massachusetts, New Hampshire, Rhode Island area. But guess what state leads student, cost per student in the Midwest? Illinois, believe it or not. And actually leads several other regions, could read, you know, other than one or two. Alaska spends more per student, probably because they have few much fewer students.